And please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, reading and approval of minutes from December 3rd.
Motion to approve this is going to be.
A motion by Wolf. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the agenda. Under 6C, we are adding the raffle for Hazen Sportsman's Club, please. 6C. Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Here you go, take a motion.
So.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Thank you, motion carried. Now, 6A. Property improvements. Mr. Gawain, please. You're up first.
This is a two-part request. One of them is to go on property that's north of Highway 200 that's declared it's in the flood zone, so therefore any structure that's built on there cannot impede water during the natural flow should it flood there. We've never seen it flood, but that doesn't mean there isn't a first time. So, I've got a request here to be allowed to build a building like this. This is about 14 feet tall. This is five foot of concrete block that comes up to about, well, I mean four feet above this high. That's five eight inch blocks there. And then there'll be steel across from one to the other, one to the other, except in the front, straight up. There's no, I'm leaving open doors there on the, on the part facing south. And first of all comes the bed. And then, because that was built on the city landfill from years earlier, so I have to excavate down about five feet and refill that with gravel. And then I can pour the slab on top of that. And then I can build the concrete block corners and spaces. Now, should it flood, you can just pull each one of these openings up like that and fasten them with a hook all the way around, except in the front, which is open anyway. And when all danger of flood is past, then you can put these doors back down and it looks like a regular building. So it's going to be stick-built, except for the concrete block. And these are only eight foot two-by-fours here, because when you get the 48 inches, that'll be 12 feet high of the rafter right here. And the building is 24 by 40, something like that. And then, as long as you've done all that trouble, you just want to put a lead-to on it, because snow comes down off of this and curls down into the building. But if you put a lead-to on it with a header on here, then the snow tends to drop right in front. So, that's what this building is. It's just to show you that there is a plan for building a through space for water should it decide to flood. There's nothing going to impede the waterway.
Where's that again, Steve?
Huh?
On the property you were?
Yeah.
Kid's corner from Jimmy's.
Yeah, right across. Yeah, the Highway 200.
You know, there used to be horses in that area, but, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
Not straight across from Jimmy's, but a little to the east.
Kid's corner to the northeast.
Yeah. So there's a.
It says the city lot.
But it's not jurisdiction.
But it's not jurisdiction, though.
But not, you don't have building permit jurisdiction.
No.
So, really, this is.
But I appreciate him telling us where.
For zoning purposes, it's wrong.
But this is federal, I think, that you gotta not impede the waterway, is that right?
Yeah, that's.
Not our, not our fault, though.
That's not the city.
Yeah.
But I thought we had a ruling that said if you're within so many.
Zone.
Just for, just for zoning.
Yeah, you could limit types of structures and so on for zoning purposes. But if it's already been zoned, what is that zone?
Cultural area.
So that.
Yeah, it's zoning.
Probably includes everything. So actually you have to go to county, which here.
Yeah, and, but then they'll ask me, have you been to the city yet? And I have.
Well, what does matter, because city can't do anything about it, except.
Well, let's see, let's just put up a hog farm or something, because we don't want a hog farm.
No. Well, if he wants to change zoning, he should go to zoning commission first.
He's not asking to change zoning.
Well, then, you don't have anything to decide.
But I thought we do this building, anything within our jurisdiction, so we don't want some weird, ugly, you know, saying it was gonna be a weird, ugly building. We have that right to say, no, we don't want that. Isn't that part of our jurisdiction?
First it goes to zoning, though. And then zoning makes a recommendation to the commission to either approve or deny.
Okay.
And then you have the decision-making process at that time. But you're not the initial.
But there's no change to zoning. My understanding was the request had more to do with your approaches.
Yeah, that's correct.
Which.
Part two was to put an approach in to both pastures right here. Now, this is, I'm gonna face it. Is that right? Maybe it's.
So this way, this is south and that's north. Jimmy's is right here.
Right.
And your land is over here.
Yeah. So, what I propose is to go 140 feet from the center line here and put it right there. And down here, about 40 feet from the bridge that goes on Amalow Drive there, put an approach in there. It already has an approach, but it has to be enhanced so it can be used. In other words, the vehicle has gotta pull up level with the road so it can look both ways, and then you can pull out, and that's.
So right now they're just driving on the curb, pretty much, aren't they?
Yeah, where they're coming in off the corner of the highway. So, this is what it, this is what it looks like from the highway down to the first approach right there where that sawhorse is right there. You see the road naturally dips right there, and then there's a drain there already. Yeah, he's looking at it, he's looking at it too, right there. And so that, that too, the approach would be brought up level with the road so that he can pull up there and look both ways before he pulls out. And the purpose for this thing right here is that I wondered, is there a standard distance from the corner that you can put an approach? And I only did the first bridge, the second bridge, and the third bridge there. And I found out even Fay Baker there, they're right off the end of the bridge, right there, you know? So there's no standard for.
That's something, we've talked to our engineers and DOT, since that's a state highway, with the right-of-way.
Yeah, but it's not on the right-of-way, it's on the city streets.
And that's not Fay Baker.
No, this one.
That's John Benny's now, right?
Okay.
And then, here's a better look at the same area, right up there where he's got his pointer. And this, this area here where the sawhorse is, this is more straight on. So you can see that the approach has to come up and, and be flat right here. And then this curve has gotta be cut out so that you can have a drive-through curb. And yours truly will pay for that operation unless you want to, you know, city improvement. Boy, you don't believe that.
I think it's improving the property more than the city, but that's okay.
Okay, now, this is the bridge right here. And this is that little pasture that's 4.5 acres here. And there's a little, there's a little. Right there. Well, there, I can't use that approach that way, because you'd be driving up like this and then trying to pull up on the road. So I gotta flatten that out. And this is where the approach is. There's a bridge, 40 feet later, the, the approach starts. And then there's a pole there, but that pole is about 15 feet away from this end of the road. So when you pull up there, you're gonna clear, you're gonna be able to see around this pole to try to see what's coming across the bridge. And now standing in the approach there, when you pull up next to the road, you see the road curves to the north there. And so there's plenty of room there to pull up there and sit there and take a look before you pull out there. It won't, it won't be a hazardous approach. And I can't have a hazardous approach anyway. So, you'll be pleased with the way the approach turns out, I think. So, a question for you then, if you can decide it, is is will you allow me to build those two approaches into that property? Because otherwise, what we've been doing, because it's, you come down here and it's the Highway 200, of course, you just turn and go down the corner of the ditch and get in there, which is not acceptable. That would only be acceptable until somebody caught you doing that. You know, so.
Well, what is your intent with your building? What's your intent with the building?
The building is just gonna be a pasture protection for livestock, should I put it in there? Maybe eight head of cattle. Two horses were in there, three horses were in there, I guess.
Three, yeah.
But that's, that's all the intentions are, is to just put a, put a building in there so that it can be used. Otherwise, there's no protection in there at all for livestock, you know? Now, the fence has gotta be rebuilt, because you cannot have livestock getting out on the highway. And so it might, it might have held those horses, but it's gotta be able to hold livestock, you know?
How many acres you got on the horse, on the south side of Amalow Creek there?
Well, it starts out with 2.9 acres, because the property goes like down here, see it? Now, there's a lot more land there. But I only own 2.9 acres. And then on this side, here where the Amalow Creek comes down and goes around here, that's 4.5 acres. And then I own a little chunk with a lot of billys on it, about a quarter of a mile further west. Yeah, this, that's 0.75 acres.
But the reason why I ask is what's, what's legally for livestock or horses to have per acre?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know that.
Because 2.9 acres is not a lot of acres.
And you, and you have to, you have to be judicious. They let the horses eat the grass right into the ground.
I know.
And that's not gonna happen. So, I'm kind of a conservationist, so I'll, I'll take care of it anyway. And then, there's weed control here. And you gotta take care of the weeds and cede it to something else that will smother the weeds, unless you wanna start a butterfly sanctuary. Milkweed, huh? You don't want milkweed, and I don't either, but but anyways, it's, it's gonna be well managed, so.
Okay. Well, Steve, before, we obviously can't grant you anything tonight, but what we will do is talk to our engineer and see what his thoughts are on these approaches, and see if there's any setbacks for the state highway. You know, I don't know if this was, that's been there for 50 years and been grandfathered in from Elvis, but, and the one over here, but.
Yeah, see, that's.
We would, and that's beyond the bridge.
That's.
It's, it's just shy of the bridge, just, yeah.
It's 235 feet, but here, over there where that Baptist church was right there, it's 140 feet. And then from here, that's 140 feet. And the frontage road is only 85 feet, and then this is to, you know, to the hub, and that's to Jimmy's there, and then this is to Senex, that's only 60 feet. So there must be, if there's a norm, it has to be found out about, so.
I'm all in favor of you improving that property. It's been a horse pasture as long as I remember, with weeds growing in the fences and whatever else. I don't wanna see, I'd rather not see sheep or hogs or anything else over there that the neighbors are gonna complain about smell or noise or any of that stuff, so. Because this, when I see your building, which looks nice, and at some point there'd be garage doors on the front, it could be a really nice garage or storage building, but I see animals, is what I see, so.
Yeah, that's what it's for. It's for protection of animals.
Mm-hmm.
Where did I see, I forgot what I was gonna say now, so.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I personally'd like to see what county and planning and zoning decides before we even talk to our engineer, I guess.
I think, I think it's prudent to talk to the, the engineer, because here regardless, if Steve doesn't put a, a building there, those approaches, there's, there always seems to be somebody using those spaces, whether it's for horses or, or otherwise. And, and right now, the access to both of those, I know when when just had their horses over here, oftentimes, the truck would be half on the street, half on the, the curb and stuff like that when they were there watering and everything like that. It would be much better, in my opinion, to have those vehicles off into the, into the land and and I, and I think, I think that conversation can take place here regardless, so, you know? Is your plan, if you don't get approval for a building, to not do anything?
Oh, no, I'll figure something out, but that's the place to start, yeah.
So you're not wanting to rezone, though? You wanna keep it at egg?
Yeah. For example, the gentleman that has those buildings over there in Beulah, I noticed that his land that he has those sheds on, if you've been over there going down Highway 49, right, this is south of Shaco. He's got five or six buildings there. Well, I can't put those there unless I zone that commercial, see? So you, you gotta be really judicious with what you decide to put in there. Now, you could put your dog park in there.
We don't have dog park.
Well, you could have, see?
That'd be parks and rec. That's, that's theirs. You're right, that could be a dog park.
Well, it's a dandy, yeah. Except that, you'd have to definitely come along the creek here where the you'd have to definitely come along the creek here, and that's parkland up to my land here, and fix it so that critters couldn't get in the Amalow Creek, because they can't get out once they get in. They had a horse fall in there, you know, and they almost lost that horse. So, that's gonna go away.
So Steve, you said that, you said that that land is only, only, I guess, only, I guess, like 2.5.
2.9. Maybe it is smaller.
We're on the drawing there, it says nine acres, what's?
Oh, it, oh, because I'm including this, this, and, and that three-quarter piece of property.
Okay.
Yeah. So. And I don't know if I own Amalow Creek at the bottom of it, as it will serve, but it doesn't matter.
Any other questions for Steve?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, sir.
You betcha. So the conclusion is it's gotta go forward?
Our conclusion is that we'll talk to our engineer and see what their, what he has to say and about setbacks and right-of-ways. Is that where you're, where you put the buildings, right, right kind of in the middle here?
Yeah. Yeah, it's gotta be, though, I'm gonna, I'll be getting together with Shannon there and locate the, the building position. So, right now, I think it's like it says.
Kind of like where your sign is at right now, sitting up there, or your, your land for sale sign?
Yeah, land for sale. You can buy that, that's cheaper than that, huh?
I bet you'd be cheaper than what you want in the past that property.
Okay.
Okay, then if you wanna, you can have this back or leave it.
Yeah, I'll take it all, because then I will, I will go visit with the county.
Yeah.
You know, and we'll go from there, how's that sound?
Perfect.
Okay.
We'll stay in touch.
Yeah.
Thank you, Steve. 5B and 5C, we have permits for Hazen Figure Skating and Hazen Sportsman's Club.
Motion to approve.
One or both?
Both.
Motion by Hack to approve both permits. Second by Pillar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. If anybody wants to see the permit application for Hazen Sportsman's, it's a treasure.
Before we give that to us?
Yeah.
All right. 8A, 2019 liquor licenses.
Does he remember we already approved boxes bar?
Any questions for Monte on this?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. Real call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
That.
Aye, Pillar.
Aye.
Over there.
Aye, motion carried. Reports. Guess we can talk about, wanna talk about the house we purchased here, Monte?
Okay.
All right. So we did, we did get one house in the auction the other day, and it's right go down the back alley here, take a right, it's the second house, it's yellow. We bought that for $6,000 was the bid, and there's some taxes against it, and there is some water, a bill against it also. But we did, we did have the city guys Friday afternoon to put a lock on the door of the house and on the door of the garage. Because after the auction went over there, people were starting to try to take, take step out of it. And over this weekend, the, the door was kicked in, actually. The Shannon and Dave, the water guys, galloped through there and took a look at it. They're really, in the house, there really is nothing to sell, which is light fixtures on the ceilings. Apparently, the garage is in pretty good shape, though. The garage is concrete floor, the concrete's in good shape, there's a furnace in there. It's insulated, work bench. What else you guys see? But, but it's.
I went over again later.
Don't, don't tear it down, you're thinking.
No.
Yeah.
We went back over and refixed the lash where they busted in the garage and fixed that.
Yeah, the garage over the busters. Apartment been ruined.
So, you know, I'd like, or have Casey and Jason visit with Dave and get the house taken down. If the weather's decent like this, we could start doing that work anytime, actually. But, anybody wants to go through, Shannon?
I did contact them, too, and they're gonna probably get that all disconnected on Thursday.
Pull a meter.
Disconnect the service, but I think Kerry said it's an underground line, so it's gotta be something.
Okay, we wanna pull a water meter out there, too?
I think we were talking about that today.
Okay.
Brian and most of the time.
So you're gonna be selling this, or what's?
The house?
None of it, after we do all the devil.
Sure. That's not assuming that we improve the property and make it a saleable place.
It's just your standard city lot size.
It's small.
It's small.
Yeah. You could probably put a little manufactured home on there, it's a nice garage already. So, yeah, anybody that's free to go over and take a look. Inside, there's really nothing to sell, which is, so. Cabinets, wood cabinets, if like.
In the kitchen, in the house, nothing.
Yeah.
Unless your cabinet's in the garage. I did talk to Stan, you and I, when I looked at recycle pile, the fire department definitely would like to do some training in that.
Okay.
Gives the house for small training and rescue training or whatever. Probably until, up until we carry it off, maybe two, three times this winter, or winter permitting.
Okay. Is it something they wanna do a controlled burn on, too?
I asked, told Stan to see if we could burn it off where it sits, so we'll probably do an inspection on to see if it's something we could burn down without harming anybody else's property, so that is a possible option.
Okay, good.
I told Monte to on off days, take the garbage truck over there, go in the garage, and just throw everything away that's garbage truck compatible, or there's a bunch of clothing and other stuff that actually is going there, all scrap metal, we'll put in the garage, put in our metal dumpster. Get the garage presentable. Clean up the property as well, as far as metal outside.
Okay, good. Set the tone, maybe. And then we did, I'm assuming we'd, we'd knock the basement in and fill, fill that.
I think you'd wanna take that concrete off, you'd probably have to have shores or somebody with an excavator, track or something strong enough to pull the walls down, but I think you'd wanna do that.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions? I'll just, if we have our guys do it, I'm not sure about maybe the festus. I guess the pavement, you know, first, and off, just, you know. Yeah, it's something there is, see what there is for, yeah.
I don't think you have to, that's private only.
Really? Okay. Okay.
I think there's a certain limit to this current value.
I would wanna just make sure they have the appropriate PVE, those for personal safety.
Okay, and Monte, we'll have our, our insurance.
That's supposed to go off.
Garage, yeah, garage insured, yeah. We don't need to insure the house in case someone breaks in, gets hurt in there or something, or?
Tell them again, or I'll.
Okay. All right. Any other thoughts? Water sewer. Streets, cemetery.
The only thing that I've got is, of course, I've been on a town, it's been a bit with my new job, but there are going, Bangbusters on our recycle pile out there. I drove out there Sunday afternoon with it. Yeah, well, how many tuns have they got crushed?
Boy, the guy just kinda threw his hands in there, there was a bunch.
There's a bunch there.
Yuri and I drove out there today, and they figured two to three days, they should be done. But I don't know if they turned the wheel today at all, because they were just strictly maintenance all afternoon. I drove back out here, the conveyor wasn't running, so. I'm thinking they were still ripping on their excavator and stuff after this afternoon, so. I think they'll probably be here most of the week, yeah.
Okay. Remember, we're getting, we're paying them by the ton, not by the day or the, the hour, thank goodness. But there is a lot of material there, and there's a lot left in the ground. We're gonna have a pile bigger than what we had before. So, we should, absolutely, I agree, I agree.
It looks like it's better than what we had before.
I think it is better. You know, we did see some stuff out there, Dave and I talked, the, the head guy, and he when Moore was taking stuff out there, they were pushing up some dirt and clay, too. So there's some stuff out there that's gonna not be quite as desirable also, but, because there's a lot of dirt in it, but boy, if they're, if they're done before Friday, I'll be surprised.
Yeah, I don't foresee it this week, really. I think he was really hoping, but. But they go put in, probably home all day, so they are running.
Yeah.
Like I say, they never moved anything today.
Yeah, and we do have some projects and some spots right now, like use some of that recycling and, and some alley roadways, so. You know? Dave, anything else?
Dog kennels coming along, it's all reshangled, got a new floor in it. Doors, we'll put the door in after it's set in place, but that's all we're moving. We'll run the force into the doorway, we'll dedicate it all, but that's coming along busy well.
The other thing at the PD, maybe this summer when the ground's not frozen, we'll see, the, the police department signage, it's got those two kind of, looks like pine posts that are right there on the bottom, there's a couple smaller ones. Those are like, they're starting to rot and fall over a little bit, and I think you're persons replaced and just, not to sign this up, frame and the poles redone if we could. You know, there's rope around the bottom that's falling down, this is kind of looking bushappy. Busing finance.
Nothing right now.
Police, fire, forestry.
On Thursday, December 13th, an email notification came in to Sakakuiya Medicine, Medical Center, followed by the, the local library here, and it was, it turned out to be a hoax, but it was a bomb. Followed by the, the local library here and it was, it turned out to be a hoax, but it was a bomb threat. Uh, indicating that they had set bombs in there and they wanted some Bitcoin. For, for payment to, to head off these explosions that apparently weren't structural. Damage causing, but would have the potential to take care of people. So our law enforcement here in Hazen took it seriously and responded to it, went over to. The, the clinic, Scott William Medical Center and they, they, they did walkthrough and stuff and. Shortly after they started that process, then it was, they, they were alerted to the fact that it was a hoax. And apparently this, the same email went pretty much nationwide. I know that when I was at work and received the call uh from Jim. It was about the same time, one of my colleagues who, who has kids in school in Bismarck indicated that they had locked down up in Bismarck as well, so it was.
Yeah, so.
So.
Our school was.
Locked down over at the recent schools as well, but kudos to our, to our local law enforcement for taking it serious and, and not stopping. Until it was confirmed that it was a hoax, so.
And they've actually waited the clinic and, yeah.
That's it.
Want to talk about forestry though?
Oh yes, we, we received uh official notice from John Dahl of his acceptance of a job. Out, out in the Williston area and so he uh effectively the seventeenth.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow is John's last date, uh, we did perform an accident interview and so we are in the process of putting together. Together plans for moving forward for his replacement. We'll work through the details on that and I'll report next meeting probably where, where we stand with that.
Thank you. Buster?
Well, my golly, I didn't think I'd have anything to share with you, but I do. I had a phone call today with the gal from the Main Street, they have the brown. And one of the things that we had talked about is. You know, what are some of our plans, you know, in terms of doing some things with Main Street, of course, we talked a little bit about the restaurants. But probably of maybe more interest is the fact that I mentioned Jerry's idea about. You know, we'd like to do something with our power poles and decorating them and she says, you know, that's interesting that you say that because. I was just in a conversation with the gal from Milner and they want to do the same thing and now one of the things that they said there, their, their power comes from Otterdale. Uh, Otterdale actually provided some assistance to Milner. To do that and I don't know if M D U here, uh, what the procedure would be to maybe make the request. If we, once we knew what we maybe would like to do uh with that, but maybe, maybe M D U or possibly. Step in and assist someone, she also talked about a opportunity grant that possibly would be. That we could maybe use that. Another thing that we had talked about it, we talked this a little bit more from C V B side of things, you know, or uh. The big sign out on the highway. And you might talk about what kind of dollars that, that we're looking at and she did also feel that uh. There probably could be some assistance coming with that if uh. You know, if we wrote the grant right, possibly in terms of where, where things are at, so. So it was uh really, you know, a, a pretty good conversation, I would actually uh over, over about a dollar, so. A lot of things, yeah, so. So, and of course I, you know, reminded her of the fact that really that a lot of these things would be decisions that you have to make. You know, as a city group, you know, talked about the bump holes probably to a miller that we have to repaint, maybe the. Crosswalks a little wider than what they were painted as. And uh, I'm not sure if I did mention the Christmas tree project or not, but. But so I think there, and I, the one thing that I did forget to ask her. Uh, I was going to ask her about the possibility of whether or not Burdum is going to. Have, has he had anything in this budget for Main Street initiative, I guess, I didn't even check, you know, Monte?
Trying to remember the address.
When, when we went to his address that day, I don't remember anything specific, he talked about keeping the Main Street project on the forefront, but he didn't have any specific little things there.
And I'm sure they, they had something in there to run through Department of Commerce. Yeah, typically that's where the money flows, so. So that's all I have.
Good, thank you. Ten A, parking slash sidewalk improvement, West River Telephone. All right, Monte's got his up, now this would be on the south side of the building. South side of that old N D U building that faces the uh. N D S U extension, yeah, there's, there we go. So where the trees are at.
So the tree, would the trees be taken down?
I would assume the trees are that compatible.
They are.
This isn't over there.
Oh, okay.
They're not there anymore.
And so in place of the, the sidewalk access there, then it would be diagonal parking all the way along that building? No. Their proposal was a five foot sidewalk right next to the building and then the diagonal parking facing into the building. They sent it up to Josh, a more engineering, he said. The drawing shows that this will reduce the width of the first street from thirty-six plus or minus feet to twenty-eight feet roughly. This would still be adequate for vehicles in the westbound and eastbound lanes to pass, however, if there's parallel parking on the south side of the street. The commission may want to look at this more than having parking really on the diagonal side. Reobviously, if they have the diagonal parking, I think the majority of the parking that's probably on that south side, with the exception of the owner of the little shed there. And that has parking on the south side as well, so. But again, this was just to bring it to your attention, I know it was discussed several times when the project was going on about redoing some of that curb and stuff, which never did. Fall into the, the project at that time, so. I guess.
Kind of something back there.
They're just looking for input going forward, you know, if it can still be included, the curb part of that, that is the city's responsibility. And working with them to get that parking again later.
I think it'd be a good project to do.
So, so if we do that, it's, it's a cost to the city? And then you just turn around and you put it on their assessment or what? Basically it would be part of the project and special assess. So, so through the city and the city engineers, we would coordinate the project as well, design and coordinate it? Right, working with their engineers as well. Cause their intention is to leave basically where the curb line is, leave that as the little spot for drainage. You know, just kind of make that the valley for the drainage and then do the parking.
Do they, do they feel, I'm not totally against this, but do they feel what looks like there's about nine, ten spots there? Do they feel that's gonna give them adequate parking?
Well, it'll give them more than what they have now because they were parking over north of Main Street between the church and businesses there and. That gets pretty congested, so this would give them some other options for their staff parking. Or additional options for their staff parking that should. Again, this is just for your information, obviously, as we get closer to construction season, there'll be more details.
Well, it's one of the biggest. Job opportunities in our community and they're, they're always a very good partner for us, I'd like to work with them, try to get this taken care of and done. You know, it, it's not gonna cost us a lot of money and, you know, it's gonna improve for them, I don't see it impeding anything over there. At all, so I'd like to move forward. Give her a blessing and get moving on it. Get some pricing. Buster?
Can I just ask you a question, I know that you had this conversation before one time, but you know the alley going through the post office? That is in pretty bad shape.
That's part of this discussion in spring as well, yeah. It was gonna be reconstructed and paved, but it got too late in the season, so then the discussion was re, redoing it and doing concrete the whole way.
Oh.
So depending on what kind of work they have in the spring, if they're gonna have to do a lot of asphalt, it'll probably be reconstructing the asphalt.
And then, you know, that, that would be in the special, but it'll be, the direct benefit's gonna go.
Mostly to them.
To them and to mandate.
I'm not sure what.
Whoever owns the post office doing. Cause I don't know, it's not a federal.
It's leased.
It's leased, it's leased, yeah.
So the action we need tonight is just approval conceptual or just a notification? This is just informational for you at this point. Yeah.
I'm assuming they, they want to move that right away to the stairs.
Well, whether it's.
Any other questions or thoughts? Who are you visiting about that with tomorrow then Monte?
I'll be, I'll contact Mr. Byerley and Wes Weaver.
Okay, moving on. Ten B. The B H G Planet for the Future circular.
Participated last year. Again, I'm not sure if Pioneer Partners is more than likely gonna be doing their own, so that's why I suggested we just do. A quarter page ad rather than a half page ad and it would basically just be this top portion of what was printed last year. And the cost on uh, for the quarter page full color is.
Two hundred and ninety-four dollars. Okay.
And where's, where's that published at? Yeah, it goes in the circular into all the area papers for. Basically all kind of B H G publishers. Sent out with all of their publications. This is about the fifth or sixth year that they've done this. I wouldn't know about.
Okay.
Make a motion remove just our, who was that, quarter page, Monte?
Yes.
For the two ninety-four.
Hey, motion by hack.
I'll second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. Rule call.
Hack.
Hi.
Wolf. Hi. Killer. Hi Stern.
Hi.
Over and over.
I motion carried. Eleven A, water rate discussion resolution. Casey, Monte. Uh, we kind of, I guess, uh, I guess I talked about just, just uh, you know, it's like having a rate that's above what we get charged. You know, and that would be just like moving ahead each year.
Second parking rate, like if we went up, the city's what?
It'd be a dollar and a half over, over our, over our, I guess, our cost.
Got you, so it'd be a set rate.
They bumped theirs fifty cents, so we bumped ours fifteen.
Yep, yep, yep.
I did have a community member approach me the other day at the auction. Said, Jesus, if anything else we can do to, you know, to not raise the water rates so high. So you come up with something, we'd be more than happy to listen to it, but I said, we can't control Southwest water state rate hikes and we have to stay ahead of the curve. We still have a payment that we're doing on a water plant, treatment plant. I think that's three more years, did you ever look at that one? It's about three years-ish. So you need to still have income to pay for that too and it's just like, I don't know, I, I, I don't know what else we can do.
Southwest rates have increased fifty-five percent since we started with them in two thousand twelve and we haven't changed yet.
Do you have any idea Monte where we rank in the state?
As far as our costs?
Yeah, are we still right above half which?
No, we're in the lower portion, most people have a base rate of fifty to sixty dollars.
When we were talking to people in Carrington, yeah, people in Carrington pay more than us and they're. I'm surprised what we get Southwest grow water or price versus what they have. It's still, it's still a good deal.
I did add one thing as far as the proposed resolution was, right now we currently charge our bulk, bulk water when we're doing a project or whatever, then they're just pumping out of the hydrant. We're charging the same five seventy-five or whatever, six seventy-three that we'll go to. And the email going through the list are the very, very few charge the same rate for their bulk water for the convenience of them getting it. So I am proposing fifteen dollars per thousand on bulk water for these projects rather than. Most of them, when they come in and ask what our bulk water rate is and we say five seventy-five, they go, oh, okay. You know, it's like a no brainer. So I guess I would, I would, like I put in the notes, I would recommend at least ten, but fifteen would be more, more realistic.
So we need to make a motion on the resolution tonight?
If you wish to make it effective when we get our new bill, yes.
I would like that. We took probably uh. Dollar and a half um. Increase over, over our, our cost with the, I guess, a fifteen dollar. Oh great. Okay, motion by.
As well, for the base of five or ten.
Even the base. Motion my stern.
I'll second that.
Second by a killer, discussion. And then you said you're gonna leave the base at a ten?
Ten.
Okay.
Is that effective for next one though?
January one.
January one.
We're also sending our bills out this week, so. If we did that, we'll just make it effective immediately.
Okay. Okay, we have motion in a second, any more discussion? Rule call.
Stern.
Hi.
Killer. Hi. Kat.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi.
I will prepare the resolution then for your signature.
Okay. Twelve A, Dakota Pump and Control Maintenance Agreement.
Uh, it's an annual agreement with Dakota Pump and Control, they have inspections and then. We're charged, the inspections, there's a flat rate for the agreement, it's five hundred and sixty dollars. If there are issues to be addressed after the inspection, we are charged on their normal rate, which has changed in the last three years.
Have you ever seen the work they do or?
I don't know, they haven't been wrong.
Oh yeah, there are those up here.
Or they've been wrong or I've been wrong, they've been here.
So Dick's obviously, or someone from the water partners with them when they.
When they had this last thing with the floods out here, they were up here within that or a day or whatever it was. And went through everything, got it working again.
So our water, our water, people are happy with them.
Yeah.
Okay, if we want to continue this agreement, then we need a motion.
So.
Motion by hack.
Okay.
Second by Stern, discussion. Casey. So on the paperwork Monte, all that I had, I wrote down, is this one of the web stations, is that?
Yeah, covers all of them.
Covers all, okay.
Yeah, it covers all of them. It's always just referred to as a station, that's basically all the main listing.
Okay, we have a motion and that's second, more discussion? Rule call. Rule call.
Hack.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Keller.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Over and over.
Okay, anything else?
One thing I'd like, would like to mention, or maybe put to the thought for the commission, you know, we have to, they'll finish up the chip ceiling this coming summer. You know, maybe we should consider chip sealing the city parking lots. That would really prolong the life of them. There's some pretty good cracks on this one across. We could do the, the crack ceiling or whatever, but if you're in town, maybe have them chip seal, we have four parking lots.
They'd put down a spray, then the rock and?
And the rock or whatever, but research and all, I'm thinking they're all, they're all due.
Do you think they have enough rock out here to do, do the?
Well, I guess you guys approved or whatever, and I can get them measured up.
Okay.
So we'd have the square footage, so, you know, maybe they could bring in more rock maybe to do that, but.
So this, this parking lot here, the one here, in the back, where the.
The overall season, the one behind the broke store is our lot.
It's better than putting a mill overlay on it.
But they're, they're due. I mean, even this parking lot here, behind City Hall, rebuild that or whatever, but enough time has passed, we, that should be chip sealed. Being there here, if they'd be willing to do it, depending on the cost, I mean, now would be the time to get them four parking lots. I think that would save.
More. See what that.
I can get them measured up, length and width, the height and stuff.
And, and be, behind the library, too?
Yeah, there's a little smaller right there, too.
It's getting to be a bit of a bad, yeah. Thank you. All right, we have bills. I have a question on that. Are you guys some refunds? Are those all done?
There's gonna be a few more because there were some that predated everything off, but didn't hold for, so yeah, there's still a few thousand dollars, but plus everything under a hundred from this.
Make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Motion by Keller. Second, second by Stern, discussion. Rule call.
Keller.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Hack.
Stern.
Wolf.
Hi.
Motion carried. May adjourn. Thank you.